We're unmuting themselves?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you so much. So with that explanation as to how to participate in the meeting virtually, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And welcome everyone who is here. And I would take roll call, but I can see from the list of participants as well as the group screen sharing that all 11 trustees are present. So we can note in the minutes that all 11 trustees are present. And so with that, if there's a flag to be virtually raised, Dr. Watson, if you don't mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if people could mute or unmute however you're comfortable with.
Yeah, just give me a second here. I'm messing with my technology. So hopefully I got the flag up at this point.
As you do, so if we can stand and say the pledge, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Like United States of America.
Republic.
Stands one nation under God. Under God is visible. And justice for all.
Thanks.
Thanks. And Brian, if you don't mind explaining one more time how folks participating by phone can make public comments when it's appropriate. I just had two requests in chat for people who perhaps joined us a bit late and they don't know how to make public comment from their phone. So could we?
Yeah, during public comment, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And then you'll be called on in order to receive. Please press star six to mute yourself too. If you're, if you haven't.
Okay, thanks. And so now we're on to item number three on the agenda, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any requests from any trustee to modify the agenda? I'm looking for hands raised virtually or otherwise. I don't see any requests to modify the agenda. So we'll move on to item number four, which is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of July 14th, which are found beginning on page three. Is there any request from any trustee to make a modification to the minutes? And if you are on Zoom, as the trustees will recall, you can virtually raise your hand under participants. It's one of the icons below participants. I'm not seeing any hands raised to modify the agenda. So we'll go ahead and approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' regular meeting of July 14th. I didn't see any hands raised to make any modifications. So is there a motion to approve those minutes? And trustee old person has moved to approve the minutes. And second to my trustee Lorenzen, all trustees in favor of approving the minutes, please type in yes or no. And I will look for the tally.
Vogel is yes.
Thanks, trustee Vogel. And it appears that the minutes have been approved unanimously as all trustees. Then we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. These are items that we won't be talking about tonight in the meeting, but any item that any member of the public would like to bring to the board's attention. We ask a few things. One, if you'll make it aware to us, Brian and me, that you'd like to make public comment on non-agenda items, either by unmuting your phone or raising your hand virtually. And two, stating your name and spelling any unusual spelling of a name. And three, limiting your comments on non-agenda items to three minutes. And so I'll check to see if there's any requests for non-agenda item public comment. I am not seeing anyone unmuting their phone or raising their hand virtually. So we will go ahead and as is noted, there is written correspondence and there's also an email or electronic filing that was made available to the trustees as to public comment that has been received on various items. So now we move on to reports and announcements. So it is announcements from Dr. Watson.
Okay, thank you trustees for the meeting this evening. Thanks for your participation. Just have a couple of reminders. Number one, we are, we're looking at the August board meetings. And just a reminder, we have our regular meeting on August 11th at 6:00. We're working out the details on that particular meeting to do that in person. What we're working through right now is how to allow for public participation, not knowing how many people might show up and staying under the guidelines from the county of less than 50 people. So we're just trying to work through those details, but we're hoping to have that next meeting on August 11th in person. And we will likely offer a virtual option as well for people that can't be in the room. And then a change to our normal meetings. You'll recall in the last meeting, I talked about our budget meeting, which has to happen on August 20th in order to have our budget approved into the state by August 25th. So that's kind of a magic date that works for us as far as the getting the information we need from the county to get that budget finalized. So August 20th is our budget meeting. And that's, I believe that's a Thursday and it'll be at 6:00. I wanted to take a second. I'm not sure if he's on the, I think I saw him come in, but Russ Lodge is somewhere in this Zoom world. And maybe Russ could unmute himself and just wave and say hello. That way everyone can see him. There he is.
Here I am. Thanks, Rob. Nice to be on board.
I wanted to just take a minute and welcome Russ to our district. Russ comes to us from, most recently from the state of Washington, where he served as an elementary principal. But Russ, of course, many will remember, was in our district at one time. He was a principal at Russell Elementary, as well as a principal at Hellgate High School. Russ has returned to Missoula and is serving in the role of Assistant Superintendent. The board will recall this last, this last year, we went through a reorganization process with our central office team. And, and we created the Assistant Superintendent position after reorganizing the executive director positions. And Russ is our, as our new Assistant Superintendent. He started on July 1st. We're really glad that he's here. He's already made a difference in terms of his ability to work with our principals and really help us through this COVID process. So I've been really appreciative of Russ's, just Russ's knowledge and his experience as a building principal and helping us move forward. So welcome, Russ. I also wanted to just mention a couple of other changes at the cabinet level. So Amy Shattuck, who was the principal at Lewis and Clark, has taken over now as our Federal Programs Director. That was part of the reorganization and we're excited to have Amy at the central office level. And we have an interim principal at Lewis and Clark, and that's Alana Van Eppes. And Alana was the Assistant Principal at Meadow Hill, but she's taken over and leadership role at Lewis and Clark. And then probably more important to all of us on the, as far as trustees is, Tracy is now taken over for Lenora. You'll all remember that Lenora retired and we're excited that Tracy is serving in that role and helping us manage meetings and helping us put agendas together. She's just been really invaluable in that role and really appreciate her work so far. We are currently finding another person to backfill Tracy's position that will focus mainly on enrollment, but also on things like transfer process and those sorts of things. So excited to have that new position that will replace Tracy's old position. And then the final announcement, which is fairly new, fairly, fairly new and wanted to make sure the board was aware. I've asked, and she's accepted, Ray Cooper is our tech director. I've asked her to fill in for its semester as our online academy principal. So I've asked Ray to serve as the principal of the MCPS Online Academy, at least for a semester, as we just get our feet under us and determine what that new platform looks like. As you recall, I mean, that's an option for students under Phase 1 and Phase 2. We want to make sure students have that 100% virtual remote option. And even at 10%, that's about 900 students. So we wanted to make sure we had a leader in that position that could help coordinate those efforts. So that, that's something that Ray has agreed to do. And, and with us on the call this evening is Brian Coniff. And Brian serves on Ray's staff, but he's going to be taking over some of Ray's previous responsibilities. So we have somebody to backfill the responsibilities that Ray is going to leave behind. So I just wanted to introduce those new folks and just talk to the board a little bit about some of the reorganization that's been happening. Thanks for the opportunity for those announcements.
Thanks, Dr. Watson, and welcome to everyone in your new positions or back to Missoula. We appreciate everyone stepping up to the plate. So thank you to all of the folks who have taken on new responsibilities. And so now we move on to 7A1, which is to approve the first reading of an amended Board Policy 1402, School Board Use of Electronic Mail and Mobile Messaging. And so Dr. Watson and Pat, I don't know who wants to take the lead. I, Dr. Watson and I also asked our legal counsel, Bea Caliva, to be here just to remind everyone what this means in the real world in terms of following this policy, especially for the trustees. So I'll leave it to either Dr. Watson or Pat to begin the conversation. And then we'll also have a little bit broader conversation as well.
Yes, thank you. So Pat, Pat can tell us a little bit about the nexus of this policy, but I believe it was a recommendation from the School Boards Association to, to add some language to the policy to make it more current. So the policy itself already existed. It's not a new policy, but in addition to email, it also now includes mobile messaging. And, and either Pat or Bea can talk through that change. But it also brings just a really good opportunity for us just to review the, the policies and procedures for board members around email and communication. And so we thought it would be a good idea to have Bea here just to talk through the policy a little bit. So Pat, do you want to talk briefly about where, where the changes came from?
Good bet. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Not able to get the video working properly, but that's not a bad thing. Anyway, the, this was a recommendation that was put out by the Montana School Boards Association. And the modification is pretty minimal, as you'll see on page 35. It references the addition of mobile messaging and mobile communication along with email. So it's just making clear that electronic communication would also include electronic communication via mobile messaging.
Thanks. And then if Bea wants to talk briefly about the policy and the communication things, I know Bea recently gave a trustee update or a trustee orientation where we talked a lot about communication, but thought it would be a good chance too to all just also review the policy.
Sure. Thanks, Rob. Yeah, so the policy that you had in place was drafted and it's been kind of a progression over the years of first talking about, you know, face-to-face communications and talking about communications and writing. And then, of course, we added email and email became a thing. But the Montana statutes are written broadly enough that they include any kind of electronic communications, which would be text messaging, any kind of message services through either Facebook or anything like that. And one thing we have seen in litigation is when they ask for communications, particularly from trustees, they don't just ask for your email, but they will ask for any communications that you have sent or received in your capacity as a trustee. And that's going to include any social media that you use, any cellphone that you use, any email that you use. So we wanted to be sure that the policy was broad enough to give trustees notice that all of that type of communication is potentially subject to disclosure as public record. And also just to kind of go over some of the guidelines with regard to social media in general. And certainly everyone has the right to their social media presence, but particularly with trustees, just reminding people of the difference between, and it's sometimes hard to remember when you're interacting on social media just in your personal capacity and when you're interacting as a trustee. So if you do maintain separate social media presences for, so I'll use Rob. So if Rob was a trustee and he was Rob Watson trustee on one page and Rob Watson, you know, board chair on the other page, he would want to be careful on his, on his board page of the, the types of things that he was communicating. And just to, just to recognize that anything sent or received on that page is likely to be a public record. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if anyone frankly has private versus public social media. But the other issue to be aware of is just that when you do put information on your social media page as a trustee, you want to ensure that it's always public record. So there are going to be some times that you get information that comes to you that's not always necessarily already public record. So it's a good idea just to double check and make sure that anything you're going to post is something that should be posted at that time. But actually, look at the policy itself, it's not really over burdensome. It just gives you a reminder that those types of communications are all potentially subject to disclosure. Anything that you, that you do or say in your capacity as a trustee, so if you're communicating with third parties, if you're communicating between trustees, even if it's not a quorum of you, it's potentially subject to disclosure. Whether or not it's the public record is a different argument. But just be aware that that's a method of communication that the law recognizes. And so we're trying to get the policy just to make sure that it's in place to give you the appropriate amount of notice that you need as trustees. Does anyone have any questions about the scope of the law or the policy itself?
I'm looking for hands up or something in chat. Oh, trustee Mercer has a hand raised. Trustee Mercer?
What, I just curious, what is the, why in sub three is a different term used than all the other additions? It's mobile messaging versus mobile communication. Is something meant by that or is not?
You know, honestly, that's going to have to be a question for either Pat or Rob because I didn't draft the policy. I honestly, I think they're interchangeable terms, to be honest. But Pat or Rob, do you know?
Yeah, you know, it's just built upon the policy that existed before, whoever drafted that one. And the reference in three was email communication. And so we just mirrored it to mobile communication. So that was probably just based upon the original draft of that policy.
Which means, Con, it's, it's most likely the language that's used in the MT SBA template. But we can certainly, I mean, I think they're interchangeable terms, frankly. I don't think there's anything wrong with making them consistent.
I guess I would join in suggesting that we modify it so it says mobile messaging, just for consistency sakes. In case someone would like to argue that they mean different things, even though we're discussing right now that they are intended to mean the same thing.
Should we then, in that paragraph, make email communications, email messaging to be consistent?
I'm just looking to see if we need to change anything else. That would be my recommendation. I don't know what other trustees think.
A quick question. We, we reference in this conversation at least. And I think in the guidelines, I'm not even sure that we do. We were talking about social media and, and but that actually doesn't appear in the policy or in the guidelines. And so maybe it's meant to be assumed that social media is a type of mobile messaging, I guess. But if we're talking about our social, like social media accounts, it'd be easy enough to add that as a, as a topic unless there's a reason not to.
No, I think for clarity's sake, we can certainly add it in. It's recognized under electronic communication, but I'm not sure that everyone would recognize that as. So I think it's fine to add social media in as well.
So if I can make a suggestion, just so we can see it in a clean version, would it be okay with the trustees that we have Pat and Bea make those modifications? We bring it back since we already have a policy in place and we're just trying to make sure it covers more platforms rather than try to wordsmith it tonight. I'm up to either way moving forward. Any thoughts? I'm looking for hands up.
If we're able to, can, can we add social media as just an amendment and then approve this at first reading tonight? Or is that something that we need to, to put off? It seems like a pretty simple change, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if mobile messaging has a certain meaning and social media has a slightly different meaning. Do we need to add all three terms in? Electronic mail, mobile messaging, and social media? That's the part that Bea, I don't know if you know that they are understood to be interchangeable or somehow mobile messaging is, if it's a text message, it's usually private and social media is not private. It's things like Facebook and Twitter. And to me, they have two different meanings.
Right. And honestly, I think it'd be perfectly fine to come back. And I can't remember, I think in your trustee handbook, I think there's some language about social media in there that we could add in that, that would make this clearer. And that's, that'd be fine. Yeah, we could, what we could do, I don't know if we need to have it come back again as a first reading, but it could come back on a second reading with the amendments that we talked about tonight. If that's okay there, right?
Trustee Decker, would that work for you? Okay, so we could add in electronic mail, mobile messaging, and social media. And.
Wait, actually, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, trustee Decker.
Um, social media, we maybe do need to actually have some more clarification around that because it's social media in the context of, I mean, is it like personal social media? Or?
No.
The person who has a trustee account, so.
Yeah, I think probably we need, we need some clarifications. I think, why don't we, why don't we bring that back clarified so that everyone's super sure what we're talking about?
So is there a motion to table this to allow legal counsel and staff to work on language that covers more appropriately everything that we're trying to cover? So moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Second to my trustee old person, all those in favor of tabling the agenda item number 7A1 to have it reviewed and bring back perhaps the next board meeting, although, yeah, next board meeting if that's possible. So we have a motion, a second, any board comment? Not seeing any hands up. Any public comment on this item to table it and revise it? Or at least review it? Not seeing any, so all those in favor of the motion to table the agenda item, please indicate yes or no in chat. And trustee Vogel, if you can vote orally, thank you.
Vogel is a yes.
Thanks. I'm just looking. Sorry, it takes me just a second to count. Folks, it appears that it has, the motion to table has passed unanimously. So we will move, we will ask Pat and Rob and Bea to take a second look at it with the idea in mind of, as to the conversations we've had tonight. So move on to A1, which is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 3140, High School Transfer Policy. And so it was presented by the administration and discussed on June 23rd at the board meeting. And it was approved and sent out for public comment. And I believe we have received public comment. And there's also an electronic file that's being maintained as to public comments as well that is accessible on the website. And so the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 3140. Are there any questions before I entertain a motion? I'm just looking for hands up. See a question, but I, excuse me. I can't, one of the trustees has a question, but the name is not showing up.
It's trustee Mercer.
Oh, thanks. It's just, for some reason, his name is not showing up in the chat room. Trustee Mercer, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess a question for superintendent, whether if quality and equality of educational opportunity in the district are goals, which do you see as preferable broadly allowing or broadly prohibiting transfers?
I would prefer that that question was allowed to be addressed by the other trustees and not as a question for the superintendent.
Right. I think what trustee Lorenzen is saying is that would be a comment that, for the discussion, once we have a motion on the table, because then we know what the motion is and what the discussion would be, so.
Will he be able to answer that? Because it really is an honest question. I'm sorry if I'm coming off as argumentative, but I really am undecided in my own mind which is better. And so it is an honest question, but if, if he can answer it later, that's fine. But it is truly an honest question.
Well, I think it's a question for the other trustees.
Right, typically it's just informational only rather than kind of more broadly policy. But Dr. Watson, if you have kind of a simple answer that would help clarify things for trustee Cohen, trustee Mercer?
Yeah, I think it is a great question. I think my, you know, having not given it a lot of thought, I think, I think I would hope that our district would have both, would have quality, quality programs at all of our schools, but equity in terms of being able to provide those opportunities at every school. And I know that's not necessarily exactly what trustee Mercer asked, but in my mind, I think, I don't think you can have one without the other. So I, I do believe that our three high schools, our urban high schools have comprehensive programs, but there are some differences in, in some of the electives. And there are some differences in, in some of the programming. And so, but if somebody were to ask me if the, if the three high schools were equal, I would say that we have a comprehensive program at each high school. That means doesn't matter where you live in town, you can access a great program and you can proceed towards graduation with that. So I don't know if we've reached equity yet, but I think we do have quality at every high school.
Any other trustee questions? Just looking down the participant list. Um, trustee Mercer, you have a second question?
Well, I guess, so my second question is, if this is adopted as you've proposed, do you expect transfer approvals to go up or down?
Yeah, really, really great question. So I, I would expect that they would go down. And I say that because we haven't really had a formal process before this. And so I, I think there's been transfers that have happened without a real formal process. And so now that we have a more formal process and it requires, as we talked about in the procedures last time, it requires students and parents to go through a few steps before a transfer is granted. I actually think just putting some of those minor things in place will actually probably reduce the number of kids that, that do request a transfer. But I, I also think trustee Mercer, I know you didn't ask this, but I think it's great to consider that and, and bring that back to the board. I, I think one of the things we always strive to do is have good policy, but we know that policy needs to be changed over time. And so I think, I think we could commit to bringing back to the board some of those numbers in the future at specific points in time during the year to kind of let you know how things are going with the implementation and if we saw an increase or a decrease in the number of transfers.
And it looks like trustee Decker has a question and then trustee old person has a question.
Um, you know, superintendent Watson just started to answer my question, which was when or how we would hear about what impact this policy has had on how people are utilizing transfers. If I remember correctly, the transfer period is at the beginning of the school year and maybe at the beginning of each semester also. And so the opportunity to hear how many transfers were requested, how many were granted, what the top reason seems to be, all of that would be really interesting as we try to develop a process that, that does in fact provide, you know, equitable access to quality education and trying to get a sense for why people are transferring. Anyway, that's, I guess that's more of a comment because you answered my question by saying that you'll be bringing some of that data to us. And I would really appreciate that.
And then trustee old person had a question?
Um, Dr. Watson, back in November, I think it was November 26th, we, you presented to the board your entry plan and you talked about internal and external points of content. your entry plan and you talked about internal and external points of contact. And I know the trustees, we got to list what we thought our priorities were for you as you came into M C P S. Can you talk a little, excuse me, can you talk a little about your point of context and what their thoughts were on how they, where they ranked the high school transfer as one of the things we needed to do immediately in M C P S?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Then the number one thing that I got from my internal contacts was to work on the organizational structure. And so that's something that, that I knew needed to happen fairly quickly because when I looked at all the internal conversations I had, that clearly came out as number one. The transfer process didn't necessarily come out as number one, although it was discussed by several internal and external contacts that I had. The, the exercise that I did with the board where you got, you all got to rank sort of what your priorities were. I did that same exercise with my three stakeholder groups. So you remember I have a stakeholder group of parents, which includes a parent rep from every school. I have a stakeholder group of teachers and of classified, and all three of those groups ranked the transfer process as something that needed to be addressed fairly quickly.
Sorry, I'm muting myself. I was just looking to see if there's any other questions. Don't see any other trustee hands up. So the recommendation is that the trustees adopt board policy thirty one forty as the new policy. Is there a motion to do so? Looks like people have already typed in some stuff, just apologize. Is trustee Lorenzen has moved, is that correct, trustee Lorenzen?
Yes.
And then there's a second, but again, that there's no name showing.
Trustee old person.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. My screen's a little bit short. So second by trustee old person, now it's time for any board discussion. And I'm just looking for hands up. Whoops, face.
I think Grace is first.
Okay.
Marcia.
Thank you. Yes, I, because there's ninety four people involved, it takes a little bit of time to get through the list. So trustee old person has a comment and the trustee Decker has a comment, so trustee old person.
Grace first, go ahead trustee Decker.
All right.
Either, either way, thanks. I guess my, my comment is that when you're creating a new policy for really a policy and procedure that we just haven't had before, it's so important to gauge the unintended consequences. And as a district, we just have a lot to learn and a lot to do about getting feedback and input in a timely way from families who are less typically speak up loudly and in organized ways. And so all efforts to make sure that we're understanding any unintended consequences of the new policy by getting the data early and trying to understand how that's going will be really helpful. And so I appreciate that we had that conversation.
And now trustee old person, sorry, I didn't get the order right, I apologize.
Thanks Chair Holland. My comment was without a policy in place, I have noticed as a person of color in this community and a person of underrepresented group disadvantaged part of that population, this was not an, it's an equitable, equitable issue because we were not being part of the transfer policies that became who you knew on how you were being able to get a transfer. And I think that was not an evil, evil level playing ground, and I think this is helping us set us at that, then we can start really looking at the data. But right now there's no level playing ground and this gets us there, so I, thank you.
Other trustee comments and?
I think I'm next, Marcia.
Thanks trustee Lorenzen, sorry, it's, it's a group tonight.
I know. I'm very pleased to see this in policy form. I think that a lot of what has been going on maybe won't change. But right now it is done by the principal of one school, but usually the receiving school, but not the leaving school. And this way, the superintendent central office is involved and we have some idea of what's going on. I think when we talk about fairness, this is a huge issue because if a person hasn't got the resources to transport themselves to a different school using a car or parent, they don't have this option. And so we can't design our schools around people making choices because it always ends up that, that the people with the resources have choices and the people without resources don't have choices. And I know there's a rumor around town that it's, you can enroll in any high school, but think about our other initiatives. We have a sustainability initiative, we have a walk to school initiative, we have no parking at one of our high schools. So the idea that kids would, would not ride their bus, not walk to their local school, but rather drive to school simply to take it, go to different school. It completely conflicts with our other initiatives. So I'm really pleased that we'll have a policy, we'll, we'll be looking at the big picture of how this is impacting everyone involved and, and to make sure that it isn't a question of who you know, maybe what, like some of the comments we had were heartbreaking. What, what pay to play basketball team was your kid on? Are they trying to just to keep their basketball team together, you know? Because there's other kids, I mean, there was a time when a person could walk into high school and start sports. And, and I think that to see their spot taken by someone from across town who knows somebody is just not fair. And I know this isn't about sports, but sports are the most visible part of this. So I'm pleased to have a policy to know that educators are involved in making these decisions for educational purposes.
I'm just looking to see if there are other trustees wishing to make.
Trustees service had a comment.
Thanks trustee service, thank you for your help, everybody.
Yes, I kind of echo what's being said in that I think this is a good starting point. I mean, the policy is pretty broad and I look forward to getting the data and finding out how it's working out. Coming from target range as a feeder school, my older daughters, we never knew about a transfer policy about going to anything that wasn't our district school. So it was something like the city kids knew and that feeder schools didn't necessarily know. And I just, and then we had all these showcases where we were like inviting people to go to different schools, which I think really created uneven sports teams that we still feel today. So I just look forward to having a process that will make people really think about what they're doing and everybody is, is on the same page and able to view what, um, you know, why they want to transfer. So I appreciate that this has been a priority. Thank you.
And help me if I'm missing anyone, I'm looking to see if there are any more trustee comments. Not seeing any, I do want to make a comment. I want to thank Dr. Watson for recognizing that this was a situation that existed in our district, which where there were no guidelines whatsoever. So I respect you for your courage to take this on and look at it. And two, I echo what other trustees have said, the process itself is really important, the fact that both principals will be notified about a student requesting a transfer from their assigned school and that central office will also know about that and be able to keep statistics about that. And I'm sure we will be hearing after a certain point evaluating, you know, what the decision-making process is about. So I just want to thank everyone involved and I, I support adopting this policy. And with that, we'll open up for public comment. And here I'm going to need a lot of help if others, if people want to make public comment. So Brian.
Yeah, just a quick reminder for anyone who's joined via phone and wishes to make a public comment. Please press star nine to raise your hand. After you've been called upon, press star six to unmute yourself.
I'm running through the almost one hundred participants and I'm not I'm not seeing any phones unmuted or anyone indicating they want to make public comments. So if you do want to make public comment, please unmute yourself and just identify yourself. And we will take your public comments since it's a pretty large group tonight. I'm not seeing or hearing anyone indicating he or she wants to make public comments. So with that, all trustees in favor of the motion to approve on second reading the board policy thirty one forty concerning high school transfer policies indicate yes or no in terms of your support. And I'm just looking, there's several messages.
Vogel is yes.
Thank you. So I'm just going to make my chat area bigger because I can't see everyone. It appears that the motion has passed unanimously as to all trustees. And if that's not correct, please speak up because some of the yeses are not showing up in my chat room with a name attached to them. And I apologize about that deficiency and whatever's going on with my computer. And so with that, we move on to A two, which is the M C P S return to school, which is information. As we had discussed, I think now maybe twice, but certainly at least once. At this point, the board is not involved in decision-making because we would be making decisions about declaring emergencies in order to secure funding. But at this point, the process about which the district will move forward is left, is in the administration's hands. And we're getting apprised by the administration and Dr. Watson at virtually every meeting about what the plan is. And as everyone knows, given the uncertainties in the world we're in right now, the plan is subject to change, but I'll leave it to you, Dr. Watson, to update the board and the public about what the plan looks like at this point going forward.
Okay, thank you Chair Holland. And I think I basically have about three items to discuss. And if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is pause between each item and just see if there's any questions from trustees before I move to the next item, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. And then at the end of the presentation, we will have board comment and public comment as well. So questions will be intermittent and then comment by both trustees and the public will be at the end of the presentation.
Okay, I'm attempting to share my screen here, so just give me a sec. Okay, hopefully you can see our website, is that showing up? Yes, no, maybe?
I'm sorry, I had to mute myself. Yes, I can see the website.
Okay, I just wanted to, I wanted to start here because I do want to be clear that the information that I'm going to show you this evening is all accessible from our website. Thanks to Tracy, so a big, big thank you to Tracy, because as you're well aware, this information's been changing very, very rapidly. And, and Tracy's done just a great job keeping our website updated. So we want to make sure you have, that folks have the most current information. So we established a button on our website, COVID nineteen. I'm going to take you through a couple of really important documents. One of those that you, we have seen before and talked about before, but it does continue to be updated. So when you hit the COVID button, you, you go to this page, probably the one that looks a little familiar to you is this overview document. I'm just going to take a minute and go through this because this document has changed slightly, but this document really kind of explains the phases. And I just want to be really clear, the phases are, have the same name as the governor's phases, but just because the state is in phase two doesn't necessarily mean that we as a district are in phase two, or if we decide, if the state decides to move to phase three, it doesn't necessarily mean that we as a district will decide to move to phase three. I think we really need to be cautious and look at the data that is in our, in our county. And so I'll show you kind of some of the data that we're tracking. But before I do that, I just want to explain this phasing model. So as you recall, phase zero is full-time remote learning, which means all school facilities are closed. Everyone is learning from home. Phase one is what I'm calling the hybrid model. It's also been called a blended model. And the reason I like the word blended is because in phase one, you've got some remote learning and some onsite learning. So under this, under this hybrid model or this blended model, students would be in school part of the week and they'd also be at home part of the week, learning remotely. The biggest reason the hybrid model has been suggested is because it lowers the number of students in the, in a school building. And it helps with physical distancing if you have less students in a school building. So the hybrid model is sort of what I'm calling phase one. And then under phase two, it's not a traditional school, but it's close to a traditional school. So under phase two, you've got every student every day. However, the schedule is modified. And the reason that we modified the schedule is to limit the number of interactions that a student has during the day. So imagine if you will, that you're a high school student and you're enrolled in seven classes. You could literally be interacting with a hundred or a hundred and fifty kids during a school day. So under phase two, we modified the, the school schedule in order to limit the number of interactions that a student might have during the day. In addition, under phase two, what we've done is we've reduced the total time in school to help with staggering of buses and to also help with cleaning of buildings either before or after school and making sure that our environments are safe for students. So phase two is every day, every student, but it's not a traditional school schedule. It's a modified school schedule. And then of course, phase three would be a traditional school model, something we're all used to. Again, we're not there yet. And even if the state were to move to phase three, that doesn't necessarily mean that we as a school district would move immediately to phase three. And I'll kind of explain what I mean by that in a second. I also wanted to talk about some of the protocols. We're trying to keep these updated as, as frequently as possible. You're well aware that the governor instituted a mask order and also our county did as well. But the mask order from the governor is a little more restrictive. So we've changed our protocols as well. Face coverings are required for all K five middle school and high school students and staff, always while they're indoors and, and on their, on the buses, but also required for outdoor groups when social distancing is not possible. So the example here is, you know, maybe it's a basketball game outside in the basketball court. It's really hard to maintain social distancing when playing basketball. So we would require masks in that situation, even though the students are outside. Now, I do want to put a caveat in that not all of our students can wear masks for a variety of reasons. It could be a health-related reason. So, or a, or a cognitive delayed type of reason. So there are, there are exceptions to the circumstance and we're aware of that. We may not be able to have masks on every student, but we're going to do the best that we can to have face coverings for all students. We're going to ask students bring their own face coverings, but we will also have a limited number for those students that don't have one or students that might forget. One other thing I wanted to just point out, under phase one or phase two, there is a option for any student to choose a hundred percent remote learning. And what I mean by that is we actually established a program called the M C P S online academy. And so students could stay enrolled in our school district, but they would be choosing a hundred percent remote learning. And that can happen either under phase one or phase two. If we get to phase three, that's still also an option, but it's probably an option for a limited number of students. We're under phase one and phase two, any student could choose that for, for either a personal health reason, or maybe it's a health reason at home that they're choosing that remote learning or virtual learning. So I want to stop there. Let me see if I covered everything I wanted to cover in that document. Any, any questions or comments on that document before I move to the next one? I'll stop sharing for a second just so we can see the.
Marcia, I have a question.
I don't know if we lost Marcia or not.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. So trustee Vogel and trustee Lorenzen both have questions and I don't know who was first. So since trustee Vogel showed up on my screen first, and then we'll move to trustee Lorenzen.
Okay, thank you. Under the remote learning options, is, would the student have to say enroll within the online academy at the beginning of the quarter? And could And could they drop that option at any time and then add it again as their, as their comfortability, you know, or something allows? Or if, if they decide that online is not working, could they enroll into the school? Or do you have an idea on how, how that would work?
Yeah, we're gonna ask parents and students to commit for a semester. And that's because once we start the other schedule, the modified schedule, it's gonna take a full semester to get through that modified schedule. So we're, we're gonna ask students and parents to commit for a full semester if they, if they choose the one hundred percent virtual learning. And so, but they would be able to rejoin school during second semester of this year.
And it looks like many trustees have questions, so I think Trustee Lorenzen is next. Trustee McDonald has a question and Trustee Abgheras has a question. So Trustee Lorenzen, and I'm trying to catch everybody.
So, so Rob, my question is about funding. Are, we obviously aren't going to be meeting the minimum number of minutes per year per student. I guess, and I, you know, I, what do we have to do in order to get funded for this? And if we're denied funding, is there a plan B? If, if the Office of Public Instruction says, "We won't fund you unless you hit the, the required minutes", what would happen then?
Those are great questions. I, I anticipate we'll use the same process we used last spring and, and requests. We actually adopted that proficiency policy, so that allows us to count proficiency rather than instructional minutes. And I know Pat's, Pat's on the Zoom, and I know Pat's investigated this a little bit too last spring. But my understanding of how financing works is we wouldn't get, we wouldn't lose funding for everybody, and worst case scenario, they would probably reduce our funding, but it wouldn't be a hundred percent loss of funding. Am I correct in that, Pat?
Yes, that's correct, so those policies that we adopted in the spring would, would be ones we'd want to look at, including the declaration, declaration of an emergency by the school board. And, and you're right, the, at worst, you would have a, a minimal reduction in funding. And you would also, by adopting those policies, avoid these penalties that are built into the statute.
Thanks, and I know I'm probably clashing on people in the order in which their hands were not raised, but Trustee Abgheras has a question, and then Trustee Decker. Trustee Abgheras.
Thank you, I have a question about the face coverings. I thought in the governor's directive, he was leaving it up to each school district to kind of make their own decision. Is there a directive from the governor, or is this a school district decision?
Yeah, that's a great question. We believe in, we believe that for consistency's sake, it's easier for us to state that we would require masks at all grade levels. I would tell you that the governor initially said in his press conference that it did not apply to schools, but the latest we heard last week is that, that they were still researching that in his order. So it may actually apply to schools, that we haven't got a real clean answer on that. But for consistency's sake, for us, we, we will, we will require for, for all grades, all students.
Can I ask one follow-up? Just, we're still following Missoula City Council County directives as well, and don't they have face ma, I mean, it doesn't, the age difference is different, but there is, Missoula has a mandatory face mask, just the age is different.
Yep, the, in the Missoula County, that order did apply to schools, but it applied for any student over the age of twelve or any child over the age of twelve, twelve or older. But the governor's order went down to five, and then the governor said it didn't apply to schools. But then we heard a backtrack on that this last week because apparently DPHHS is reviewing his ruling and seeking legal counsel to see if it does apply to students. So we'll probably get a final answer on the governor's rule, but in the meantime, we just wanted for consistency's sake to let our families know that we're gonna require it in all schools, all grade levels. And realize for some of our younger students, we understand that's gonna be difficult. And we know that teachers are gonna have to work with those students to figure out how that works. And for, for some students, it may not be practical at all, but we'll do the best we can.
And then Trustee Decker has her hand up, and then I'll check to see if others do as well.
Thank you. Rob, when you introduced Ray Cooper as the principal of the remote, of the online academy, you had mentioned the figure of about ten percent of children who might be utilizing that option. So my first part of the question is what that estimate is based on? And then the second part is what services, if any, would be made available to students who are participating in the remote academy, like meals or therapy of different kinds that children usually receive? And, and just, I guess I'm gonna stop there for now, lots of questions, of course.
Yeah, great, great questions. That, I said, when I said ten percent, that's a conservative estimate. It could be much higher than that, it could be lower than that. But, you know, we've been exploring what some other districts have been, have been using on some of their surveys. Target range, for example, just did a survey. They found anywhere between thirteen and fifteen percent. We are, we are gonna do our own survey to get an exact percentage. We're likely to launch that at the end of this week or the first part of next week to parents. I wanted parents to have an understanding of what it would look like before they answered the survey. Just wanted to make sure everyone was educated in what the, what the scenario was before you, before we asked the question. But at, speaking conservatively, at ten percent, that's nine hundred students in our school district if you just go ten percent. But it could be, it could be higher than that, it could be thirteen to fifteen percent. Regarding the options or the services for kids, those are a couple of great points. The meals for kids and any, not only any mental health services, but also any special education services. We're gonna have to figure out how those, how those operate under a remote learning situation if a student chooses that. So that's our responsibility and we'll figure those out.
Any other trustee questions?
It looks like Trustee McDonald had a question.
Oh, thanks, yes, thank you.
Hi, this might be jumping ahead a little bit, but in regards to how many people are gonna be in the rooms and visitors and whatnot, is it called the SRO, is that with the cops, the? What's the status on that? Are they gonna be there or?
Yeah, the school resource officers are, are members of our staff, and so under any model, phase one or phase two, the staff members would be in the buildings.
Okay, great, thanks.
And it looks like Trustee Mercer has a question. And just to, just before Trustee Mercer asks this question, someone from the public looked like they wanted to ask a question, but under the format we follow, that would be more public comment. And trust, and Dr. Watson would be happy to answer any questions through a phone call, but we'll take public comment shortly, so Trustee Mercer, go ahead.
Is there a possibility that the K through five schools, if it's really borderline, might be in the modified while the high school had to remain in the hybrid? Or will all schools be in one of those phase categories?
Yeah, that's a good question. We have talked through some of those scenarios. I think the one that, the one that we've talked through, although not ideal, would be to have the K five students or the, even the K eight students back in school while having the high school stay on remote learning. So I think that, that might be something we explore, but it, it creates, it creates problems, as you're well aware, in our school schedules when we have different grade levels on different schedules. So it creates other problems. So best case scenario, we have all schools in the same phase at the same time. And I'm not sure if Trustee Vogel raised her hand again, or if she just didn't put it down last time, but it looks like Trustee Vogel might have a question.
And also Trustee Sturbis has a question, so Trustee Vogel, did you have a second question?
Yes, I do, thank you. Would, would staff also be able to opt into teaching the online academy if they don't feel safe to return in person, like if they had an underlying health issue? Would, are the staff also able to freely move?
Yes, we, same thing for staff. We will need a commitment from staff for the semester because once we've got them working on the remote learning option, then we're, we're gonna need them in there for the whole semester. We're right now working through the details of what that looks like with staff, and your, your point is well taken. An underlying health condition would qualify a staff member to, to telework. So those are some of the things that, that Dave Roth, our HR director, is working through right now with our staff.
And Trustee Sturbis has a question.
You say, under the high school's school model for phase one, it says no extracurricular activities. Would that mean if we start the school in phase one that there would be no high school sports?
That is a great question, Trustee Sturbis, I really appreciate the question. I would recommend no, no extracurricular activities for K eight. But as, as I think the trustees are aware, the Montana High School Association governs the activities at the high school. So even though I might recommend no activities at the high school, we're gonna have to sort that out with the Montana High School Association. I do have an update later on that I can talk through about that. But the Montana High School Association has basically said that they want to restart sports in a normal way and that, that we're gonna have to comply with our local health department regarding the, the, the rules around, then protocols around sports. Now, I, I have, and that just came out on Monday, so I apologize, I wasn't able to get it in the agenda. But I have given those directives to our county health department. And tomorrow morning, I have a call with our county health officer to talk through the Montana High School Association recommendations. But, you know, we, we, if we decided as a school district to not run any high school activities, even though the high school association said you, you, you can and you should, then we would end up forfeiting those matches that might be occurring with the high school association. So we, we probably can't unilaterally make a decision not to do activities at the high school. We're gonna have to have some support from the health department and then have a discussion with the high school association. But I am recommending, under phase one, for middle school, for example, that we, that we do intramural activities rather than inter-school activities. And the reason is, is because I think the biggest concern is when you start mixing kids from other schools and other communities, that, that becomes a concern for all of us. So if we open in phase one or the hybrid model, as I'm recommending, then we would stick to intramural activities at, at the six-eight level. And by, by intramurals, I mean just competing against other kids in the school.
And the point I would say is that high school poses more of a risk because you're intermixing with the whole state. So that's one point that's a very, a big concern for mine, for me.
Yep.
Any other questions before we open it up to either board comment and then public comment?
Well, I just have a couple more things to present.
Oh, sorry, I forgot, sorry.
You're fine.
Two more.
Okay, let me, if you don't mind, Trustee Holland, I'll just present the other document.
Sure.
And again, going back to our website, just so folks know where to find this information because this document does depend greatly on some, some external links, and so I want to show folks where to find those. So what we released on Monday to our, to our parent community, and on Friday to our teaching staff and our classified staff was the phased model for reopening. And really what this is, is it's a decision-making model, and I want to be clear that probably the most important thing we do is base our decisions on what sorts of data we're seeing in our county. So it was important for me to make sure that our staff and our parents understood how we would make a decision. So just because we have the phases, phase zero, phase one, phase two, the next question is, okay, which phase are we gonna open in? And which, when will we move to the next phase? And there, there hasn't been any real clear guidance in any of the state, state guidance or the federal guidance, there's been no clear guidance on when to move from phase zero to phase one to phase two. So what I did is tried to research a number of different data sources around COVID and also looked at what some other school districts were doing with regarding this sort of decision-making process. And what I created was a, really a decision-making model that'll help us as a school district decide when it's safe to move from phase zero to phase one or phase two. So I won't go through these again, but just so you're, you're clear, phase zero is, is completely remote only. Everyone's at home. Phase one is that blended model, some in person, some at home. And then phase two is that every day, every student, but again, it's a reduced schedule. I also put a comment in here about the MS, MCPS Online Academy, that's separate, that's separate and different from the phases because you could enter the online academy at any point in time. Or at, at the beginning of a semester, I mean, but you could be in that program rather than any of the phases. All right, so what I, what I tried to do here is explain some of the data that we're gonna be looking at, and I'll show you where to access that as well, so folks can follow along on that. But, um, sorry. Get that. So, Marsha, can you see my screen now? I'm sorry, I wasn't sharing earlier, it's the...
Looks like a sand, I've got a sand dune up there.
Okay, that's not what I want to share then. Give me a second, apologize. You think I'd be better at this by now?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, so, um, a couple of the data pieces we're looking at, and this stuff changes fairly quickly. So it'll be really important for all of us just to keep, keep a tune of this. But one of the things that has been suggested is that if you want to understand the spread of COVID in your community, one of the things you should look at is the number of new cases by day. Now, obviously, those case counts go up and down, but what we can look for is a trend line. This particular graph that I posted here is from the county website, but I'll show you even a more current version in just a second, it's on the county website. But you can see there was a, you know, there was a spike back here in March, and then there was another one in late June. But we're looking at the trend line, and what we'd hope to see is a, is a decline in the number of new cases by day. We'd hope to see a decline in the twenty-eight days leading up to the start of school. So that was one suggestion, and I'm using twenty-eight because if you just look at fourteen, it's, it's hard to, to ferret out the ups and downs. But if we, if we focus on the twenty-eight days before school starts, that seems to be a, a good, a good window. The other thing that I'm gonna draw your attention to, another piece of data that's really important for us to watch is the rate of transmission in our community. And that is, that's easily accessible in a couple of different places, so I just want to show folks where that is. So, um, I'm gonna first go to the county website to show you the most current information regarding the number of new cases and talk through this graph a little bit. So this is the county website, and this is their, what they call their epidemiology page. And again, there's a link to this posted in my newsletter as well as on our website. But this particular graph right here, the very first graph you come to, is, shows you the number of new cases each day going all the way back to March sixth. Now, what's really interesting about this graph is, as you're well aware, because we had a slew of backlog at the state level in terms of getting cases back. So on Saturday, you probably saw the news, we got a ton of cases back. And so if you looked at this graph, you would see a spike on Saturday in terms of number of new cases. But remember that not all those cases came, came, even though they all came in on Saturday, they're not, they're not always gonna be tied to Saturday. And the reason is, is because what the health department does is as soon as we, as soon as we get a new case, they ask the person when they first started feeling symptoms. And then they actually attribute that case to the date when they first started feeling symptoms. So the example I can give you is, you know, let's say I, I turned out positive on July twenty-second, but I actually was feeling symptoms on July thirteenth, it just took that long to get my test back. They'll actually attribute my case to July thirteenth rather than July twenty-second. So what that does is it helps sort of smooth out the curve a little bit, so we can actually see a trend line. And you can see there, there have been some ups and downs, but overall, we're seeing a downward trend in the number of new cases. And again, we haven't even started the twenty-eight day window before school starts, but this is something that I want to watch. And again, we haven't even started the 28 day window before school starts, but this is something that I want to watch very carefully. And then the second thing I wanted to show you is the rate of transmission. And this is another piece of data that gives you a good idea of, of how the virus is trans, is transmitting in your community. So this is a, this is a modeling page that's been set up by the University of Montana. And on the far end of the graph is the infection growth rate. And I know this is kind of hard to see, but I want to talk about what they call the R value or the rate of transmission rates. So the way this value, what it means to us is if, if you have an R value of one or two or three, it tells you how much the, the virus is transmitting in your community. So if you have an R value of, let's just say, two, that means that for every positive case that you have in your community, they're infecting two other people. If you had an R value of three, then for every positive case in your community, they're in, they're infecting three other people. And so you can see exponentially, if the number was higher, it could get exponentially worse in terms of the R value. So one of the things that, that we're been, we've been looking at and the whole state's been looking at is this R value. And you may have heard in the news, two or three weeks ago, they said Montana had a really high transmission rate. They were basing that on the size of our R value. So what they tell you is an R value, any R value that's greater than one means that there's a lot of, there is community spread. But if you have an R value of less than one, then there's, there's less likely to be community spread. So this is something to pay attention to, what you're looking at here is the entire state. And you can see, they look at the median line. So the R value for the state, and this is back on July, July 8th, the R value for the state was 1.47, which means we had a pretty high transmission rate because it was higher than one. It's, of course, it's not two or three, but anything over one means that it's a, it's a transmission rate. But you can also look by county, they have, not every county up here, but they have some of the big ones. So here's Yellowstone County, their transmission rate back on that same date was 1.51. Here's Gallatin County, their transmission rate on that same date was 1.80. So you can see some of the counties have been quite higher. Missoula fortunately has had a pretty low transmission rate. So back on that same date, the transmission rate in Missoula was actually less than one, it was 0.89. Now, this is going to go up again, we know that. And so this is something we want to pay attention to and watch in those weeks leading up to school. So these are just, I wanted to show you those two pieces of data because those are two things that I, I believe as a school district, it's our responsibility to pay attention to this data and really make a decision based on the data rather than just, you know, what works best for schedules or those sorts of things. So those are two pieces of data that we've been gathering from the health department. There's one more piece of data that we're just exploring right now, and that's the incident rate per thousand. I'm not clear how that's going to help us, but we are exploring that. There's a couple of other districts that are using that as well, but these two pieces of data I think will be very helpful. So that was my second thing I wanted to show, Marsha, I'll just stop there to see if folks have questions. On those two.
Trustee questions on the second aspect of this? And I welcome anyone, oh. So my, oh, sorry, trustee Sturbis has a question and then trustee Smith has a question. And then trustee Decker has a question.
That was from before from me, I, I don't have a question right now.
Okay. So trustee Smith and then trustee Decker, it looks like.
I, I think mine's more of a comment, but I, I guess what I, what I want to point out to the people that are paying attention is, I, I'm glad to see us looking at this strictly, or not strictly, but, but from a data point of view, what, what, what we're seeing a lot in, in public comment and the concerns from parents and teachers. And they have questions about how can you, you know, think of starting the schools? And you know, there's, what they have concerns and they're very legitimate concerns and then things that we have to take into consideration. But at least I, what I want to point out is, and I appreciate this, Rob, is that there's, there's a lot of information that you're putting out here. It's real hard for a lot of the people that might be either on this call or, or just, you know, that are going to read about it later, see it. There's a ton and ton of information and, and for a lot of us that, that have been doing a lot of the homework that you've been giving us and, and I appreciate it. But it's, it's a lot, but, but there's a lot of information and I think what I want to boil it down to is to just stress to the public, we're not acting impulsively and, and I think that, that the data-driven attitude is the right way to go. And at least to see this method, having you explain it, even though a lot of people might not understand it, 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 it helps me and I hope it helps some other people to understand that there is a means to the method. And, and I just want to say, I appreciate that.
And I'm just going to say, let's move that comment to when we're taking public or trustee comment and public comment. And right now we're just in the question part, so it's preserved via the recording that that's a comment you'd like to make. And trustee Decker looks like she has a question.
Thanks, I'm wondering if you could say a little bit more, Rob, about what the, the yardsticks might be in the, the increasing and decreasing. You mentioned that we can probably anticipate that numbers will go up and, and we hope that we'll also see them go down. But is there in fact, are there levels of numbers of cases? Or is it only about increase and decrease in terms of how we launch and how we make changes as we go forward?
Yeah, I think I can, that's a really good segue, if you don't mind, into my third thing that I wanted to chat about. And that was the scenario graphs that I, that I presented in my last newsletter. So let me go back to our website and I'll go back to this phasing document. What, what I presented was sort of an overview of the model, but I also presented just a couple of scenarios. These, these are fictitious, I just created these graphs. And my hope was that it would give people an idea of how we would move from phase to phase. So one of the things, and this speaks specifically to trustee Decker's question is, we're hoping to see a steady decline in the number of new cases. And so this example shows you sort of that. So if we start back here on July 29th and we monitor for 28 days and we see that nice steady decline, then I think, you know, we can comfortably say that we could move to phase zero, I'm sorry, phase one in yellow. And then again, continue to monitor those numbers and hopefully see either a static or steady decline. And then eventually move to phase two. Now, if we don't see that, we could stay in phase one for a little bit longer and just keep monitoring that. I would recommend doing 16 day increments and that just fits with our schedule, but that's just my recommendation. And then the other option here, the other scenario is that we start seeing a tremendous increase in the 28 days leading up to school. Then I would tell you, it's probably not safe to come back to school and we probably should start in remote, full remote learning and continue to watch those case counts. So this is just another alternative scenario. I don't want to call it the worst case scenario because we want to make sure kids are educated. That's always the best case scenario to make sure they're educated. But here's another scenario where the case counts increased dramatically. And so then we might start in remote learning. I just don't want to make the decision right now, I think it's just a little bit too early. I think we need to watch these case counts and see that steady decline. I'm hoping to have a decision no later than August 11th regarding whether we're starting in phase zero or phase one. And then the other thing that trustee Decker asked about, are there triggers or are there markers? What I, what I think you need to do is look at that trend line, see a downward trend line or a stagnant trend line. So one of the things that I also learned about is, from, this is from a national source. If, if you have less than five new cases in your community each day, then it's probably safe to go back to school. If you have more than five new cases each day, then it's probably not safe to go back to school. So that's one trigger. So we'll always have two or three cases. I mean, it's, we're never going to be at zero, although there are some days during the shutdown when we were at zero. We're always going to have a few new cases each day, but if it remains low or pretty stagnant at or below that five level, then, then we probably can say that it's declined and we're in a kind of a stayhold, stable time. And so it's probably safe to go back to school, but I really think we need to watch this for the next 28 days.
And I have a, can I ask a follow-up? I know that we sort of went into it next piece, but I'm, I'm just confused by that because the graph of the sorry, if you go back to the, the instance where in the, the visual that you have, the cases go up and then down a little and then we go into phase one. Actually have more cases than we had when we started monitoring going into phase there and it's above five the whole way and
Yeah, I agree, I was just trying to, I was trying to get a model for what it might look like, but yeah, I think we were going to have to be real careful with that.
So these are just like a, for example, and we don't actually have a number that's our trigger right now, but we're, but you, that's something we're working on.
Well, what, what the trigger is, is, is a steady decline. What I would tell you, if you go back, if you look at all of Missoula County for the last three months, I think the highest one they had was 12, maybe 13 new cases in a day. They, they've never been at 20 new cases in a day, but I would say if we, for some reason, we got to 20 new cases in a day, that would mean to be, show the opposite trend. It would show an up, upward trend, which would not be good. So I, I don't, I don't want to necessarily nail down a number because it's, what I want to see is a downward trend in the number of new cases.
And I apologize because Dr. Watson's screen sharing, so I can't tell if anyone else.
Yeah, let, let me just wrap up, I, I won't go through a whole lot more of this, but the last thing in this document, under a best case scenario, if we see that steady decline and we start in phase one, what I tried to do is map out what that could look like over the course of the first quarter and the first semester, just to give people an understanding of what I mean by a reduced schedule, reduced reduced number of group interactions. So under a middle school or high school schedule, I'm recommending only two classes a day. So that you have a less chance of mixing with other students. And then I also talked a little bit about what the first 16 days could look like. So I was just trying to give folks a really good understanding of what it could look like in, under a best case scenario. And we started off in phase one. So I'm going to stop there, I think I showed everything I wanted to show and I'll stop sharing.
And so apologies. So trustee Decker, did you have a question? Is that from earlier?
I did have one, I have lots, but I want to leave space for people who haven't spoken.
So we're still in the questioning part, then we'll have board comment and we'll take public comment. So let me scamper down to so trustee, old person has a question.
Thank you Chair Holland, Dr. Watson, you talked about triggers for how we would go back to school. What is a trigger for us to close a school down if anything happened?
Yeah, great question, we're working with the health department on that protocol. What they said is if, what the latest thing they said is if we have a positive case, either student or staff, they would work really closely with us to do contact tracing. We may not have to close a school if we can contact trace and, and narrow that down. However, if it looks like there's a lot of students impacted or potentially positive cases, then, then we would likely have to close either for a short period of time for contact tracing or for a longer period of time for quarantine, so anywhere from two to 14 days. But we would work closely with the health department in making that decision.
And it looks like trustee Sturbis and then trustee Agueras have questions. And if I'm missing someone else, I'll try to scamper down and look. So trustee Sturbis?
I guess I was curious, when are you going to ask the board to vote on something?
Good, good question, I think if we, if we end up in remote only, then, then it would be, the board would have to vote on that emergency closure process and policy like we did last spring. So if you recall, you know, the state put us in closure mode and then the state sort of lifted their restrictions on school closure. And that required the board to vote on keeping schools closed. So if it looks like we're headed towards a remote only during that, you know, during that first phase, then, then we would bring that to the board. If we start in phase one and things really start going south, then we'd probably have to have an emergency board meeting to talk about a, a school closure again. And that school closure allows us to, for you to declare an emergency, for us to move into remote learning so that we can still maintain funding and all those other things.
And so just to clarify for all the trustees, right now, we're not asking the board to vote on Dr. Watson's plan because we're leaving it in the administration's hands. Because the board would need to act to ensure funding sources, which would be emergency closure. So right now, it doesn't require board action to approve these various plans because they're an administration level plan. But at the point, if we would lose funding, then we would come back to the board, just like we did, I think it was in March at that time. Does that help?
Yeah, because that's the thing I've always been wondering about is like, when are we supposed to vote? I mean, you kept saying whenever the board decides and so it's, it's rarely never been a board decision, it doesn't sound like.
At this point, there are point breaks. If we're going to lose funding and it requires, and I, Pat can clarify this, but I believe state statute allow or requires us to make a declaration as a board in order to maintain our funding sources by declaring an emergency. But up until that point, we would still be able to maintain funding sources without board decision-making because it allows more flexibility. If the administration just has the ability to make decisions, as you can see from just this presentation about how nimble, and I didn't ever want to say that word, but how flexible we need to be, then it would be at the point that it impacts our funding that the board would be voting. Does that help?
Yes, I really appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, and then trustee Agueras has a question and then I'm not sure, I'll look for other questions. Trustee Agueras?
Yeah, my question piggybacks off of trustee Deckers and that is, when, when you're looking at, you're looking at trend lines for the different phases. And obviously when you go between phases, it's extremely tumultuous, not just for staff, but parents and students, which is the most important. So can you tell me, you know, what, what, why not just start, if you have a low number in Missoula and we're declining or flat, why not just start in phase two and, or are you starting in phase one just out of abundance of caution? Or you know, what, what's the thinking behind that?
Yeah, that is a great question and that's another piece that I, I didn't get to tonight, I apologize. We just, I wanted to be cognizant of the board's time, but we also were made aware and I've read through it, it's a research study around the impacts of school schedule and how it impacts transmission rates. It's a very interesting study that was done on the East Coast. And basically they modeled everything because of course, nobody's been in school to actually try this out. But they did some mathematical modeling and they looked at how schedules, how school schedule impacts transmission rates. And they looked at every schedule we've talked about, they looked at the hybrid schedule, they looked at a modified block schedule, they looked at all of them. And what they said is that a hybrid model actually, actually, and not the one we looked at plus a couple of other hybrid options. It actually extends the time, it extends the time that you'd have mass transmission in your school. So it, it is out of abundance of caution and looking at that study and looking at exactly how, you know, just a tweak of the schedule can really extend the transmission, will lessen the transmission rate in the school. And so I think out of an abundance of caution, I, I wanted to start in phase one and just see if our restart of school had any impact on the community rates. Because it's a, it's a big leap of faith and, and of course, we're watching the data. But you know that our schools and our community are very closely related. So I wanted to see also, you know, does the fact that we go back to school, does that have an impact on our, on our case counts in our community? I wanted to see also, you know, does the fact that we go back to school, does that have an impact on our, on our case counts in our community? Even though phase one is only 16 days, it's spread out over almost four weeks. And so that would give us time too, to kind of see if the fact that we went back to school had an impact on case counts. So it is, I guess, a long, long answer. I'm sorry, but it is out of an abundance of caution, but also some a research study that I looked at that related the type of schedule and how, how it impacts transmission.
Sorry, unmuting myself. Um, so I'm looking for other trustee, hands up for questions. And I'm not seeing any, so let me know if I'm missing someone. Other than that, oh, trustee Decker has a question.
Thanks. Um, I'm wondering if you could share a little bit about what the teacher experience is gonna be like in terms of the phase one, phase two um, experience. Um, teachers who are teaching in the classroom in phase one, um, what that looks like for them to have a separate group of children for a couple of days. Um, and then be, I, I guess, teaching them also remotely on the days that they're gone. And then what it looks like for um, keeping those consistent small groupings when the teacher is actually still interacting with both of those sets of children um, at the beginning of the week and the end and kind of what, what all that looks like.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'll be able to answer all of it, but I'll take a shot at it. So this, this, um, this schedule for the first 16 days is probably the best way to explain this. So as a teacher, under the hybrid model, I would essentially have half my kids at the start of the week and the other half the kids at the end of the week. Um, so as a teacher, what I would plan to do is I would look at my lesson plan for the first week or the first two weeks. I would decide which types of activities are best done in person and which types of activities could be done remotely. Maybe would require a little less facilitation by the teacher. So I would, I would see half of my students on this and during week two, I'd see half of my students on Tuesday and Wednesday. I would do the in-person stuff that I needed to. I would give them direction on what they're gonna be working on at home. And then for the second half of the week, I would see the, the last half of the alphabet. So I would kind of repeat what I did for the first two days with that second half. But then that second half would actually work on the remote stuff the following week when they're not in school. So it's not perfect and I, I should have, probably should have started with, there is none of these models that provide a perfect educational atmosphere, but what we're trying to do is, is get some connection with students again so that, so that we can keep kids moving forward. Remember that when we, when we went to remote learning in the spring, those teachers had already had met those, majority of those students and worked with those students. But now these, this is a brand new set of kids that they will have never met before. So we anticipate that remote learning will even be more difficult without having that connection. So that's one of the reasons, you know, this hybrid model um, seems like an appropriate model to start in, just to give teachers that chance to connect with their kids. And then regarding the schedule, I think probably the other thing that I want you to consider is um, what, what we know is that for teachers, you know, if I'm a high school teacher and I've got five classes, I'm interacting with 100, 120 to 150 kids a day, even more if I'm a music teacher. And so what we try to do is reduce the number of interactions that a teacher might have in a given day. Um, because that's a lot of kids to interact with and, and the rate of transmission obviously could be pretty high if you're interacting with that many people in one day. So what we tried to do is create a block schedule, an intensive block schedule where a teacher would only have two periods a day, rather than five periods or six periods a day. So they would be interacting with fewer number of kids for a longer period of time and a, and a longer number of weeks before they moved on to the next classes. I, I will caution the board that this is not ideal as well. I mean, it's not a perfect schedule either because if you can imagine, if, if I was a student that had math for period one, I would pretty much be done with math after that first rotation for that quarter. And I may not have math again till the next quarter begins. So it's not perfect either. And so there's, there's, there's definitely some pros and cons to this sort of schedule, but out of an abundance of caution, not only for our students, but for our teaching staff, I believed it was important to reduce the number of interactions they would have in a, in a given day with students.
And trustee Decker has a question and trustee old person has a question. And if I'm missing anyone else. I guess we're kind of in, I can't remember for a trustee, comments or questions. So perhaps.
I think we're still in questions. I think it was just the old person.
Trustee Decker and old person. Oh, trustee Decker, you're done? Okay, thank you. So trustee old person.
Thank you Chair Holland. Dr. Watson, um, when you brought up your screen and you were showing the schedules, how flexible will MCPS be with families? For example, my family, we, in our household, we have two different last names. So siblings have last names. And I, I have other family in Missoula, so if we were trying to schedule our children to help with childcare and they have different last names, how flexible would the um, school district be with us trying to figure out how to for childcare or for how to have our children go on the same day?
Yeah, we just chatted with principals about that today. So not only are there different family names in the same household, but you also have, you may also have kids in multiple different levels of school. And so what, what we told the principals is if the family is in their school, they can be flexible around trying to get the students there on the same day. But they also have to be cognizant. They may have an older sibling at the middle school or the high school. And so they're gonna have to work with principals at different levels to get the kids there on the same day. So we are anticipating we'll have to be a little bit flexible around the, that grouping.
And great, great question trustee. Old person, any other questions? Not seeing any then, even it's an informational only or trustee, or sorry, Dr. Watson, anything else on your agenda? I mean, in terms of your presentation?
I appreciate the time. There's a lot of information. I'm just uh, appreciate the time and promise I'll keep the trustees updated as well as our, our community as well.
I so appreciate that. And so now it's time for trustee comment and then we'll take um, public comment and we've captured trustee Smith's comments and you're welcome to add others. Trustee Smith, trustee Decker has a comment and I'm looking down. And trustee old person has a comment. So go ahead trustee Decker and then trustee old person.
I think trustee old person uh, was ahead of me on this one.
Sorry, I, it's hard to keep track of all this.
Actually, I think trustee Smith was before me. I don't know if he still has a question or comment.
Trustee Smith?
No, I'll just repeat what I said before. I apologize for doing it out of order.
Okay, then trustee old person, is that the right order?
Okay. Um, I, my comment is I just want to um, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Watson, for you and your team. Um, I know this is a difficult decision and I'm happy to see that it's very data driven and I just wanted to thank you for that and for how, to show us how you're coming to your plan as the superintendent.
Thank you. And then trustee Decker?
I'll, I'll echo that. I'm, I think sometimes it can feel difficult to um, be expected to wrestle with all the unknowns, but I mean, my goodness, that's exactly where we are. I do wanna make one comment, which is that I have a lot of concern about the choice to be 100% remote learning and the impact that that may have um, in our community long-term uh, as well as just this year. Um, when we talk about families choosing to be 100% in the online um, academy, um, it's really not true that every family has the equal ability to make that choice. Um, there are families who have the means to set up very supportive situations for their children to participate in remote learning. And many parents are already pursuing private avenues to make that happen. Um, there are many other families who, because of their work situations, because they work in essential occupations, um, that as a community, we cannot afford to have them stay home with their children. Um, there also are many families, of course, who for economic reasons cannot stay home to support their children with remote learning. Those families don't have the equal opportunity to choose um, 100% remote learning either. Unless we figure out some ways to support them um, to ma- to make that choice more equitable. And that speaks to my questions earlier about things like meals and other kinds of support. Um, I really hope that people that are considering the choice to do remote learning consider working very closely, if possible, with the school district to um, consider ways to be as participatory and as community minded around that choice as we can be. Um, and I really hope that as a district, we acknowledge that um, that that choice may put people who are already more vulnerable in the more vulnerable situation. They, they may not feel like they have the same ability to make that choice. Um, it may not be a board decisions if it's not impacting our bottom line, but I also think it's our responsibility as a board to ensure that we provide the same quality of education to all children. And I'm concerned that the choice factor um, may be actually more problematic than we think in terms of what we provide for all.
And it looks like trustee Agueras has a comment.
Yeah, just a, thank you. Just a quick comment. Uh, you know, obviously the students are the most important thing around this decision. There's no question about that, but just want to say that to make sure and, and not that they are lost, but to really think about the staff and the challenges that we're putting on the staff, all the teachers and administrators and everything uh, in the school district for this, uh, it's, it's a lot. It's, we're not only asking them to go and, you know, they're uncomfortable, some will go and still be a little uncomfortable. Um, but you're gonna be asking a, a lot of teachers to be distractions with face coverings, um, other challenges that are gonna go along with that, some remote stuff. There's a, a lot that we're gonna be asking of our, our teachers, our administrators. Uh, it's, it's gonna be a lot. And so I just wanna, wanted to put a comment out there to make sure we know just, we're gonna be asking a lot more of them this year than probably any other year.
And I'm just looking down to see if there's any more trustee comments. I will just add one in if no one else has anything. Um, the it, it's really trying times and I appreciate it's data driven. I appreciate we're taking in all these aspects. I really appreciate the questions that the trustees bring to the board. And I couldn't be prouder of the way we're trying to meddle through this unprecedented times. So with that, I'll open up to public comment and I will need help trying to figure out how to because I can't see who's raising their hands first. So Elizabeth Williams is the first one that showed up on my screen. So Ms. Williams, if you want to unmute yourself and make a comment, that would be great.
Hi, um, thank you so much. First of all, I wanna thank Dr. Watson um, and all the administration who, um, who have been working on this. I wanna thank the trustees for your diligence with this as well. Um, I know this is really complicated. There are a lot of um, moving pieces and a lot of unknowns and a lot of what ifs. And there is no perfect solution. Um, that said, um, I do have some concerns and some comments. So first of all, I also want to thank Dr. Watson for the YouTube video that you posted explaining this the other day so that um, so that there was at least an opportunity to learn a little bit about this draft proposal before tonight's meeting. Um, some things that still remain unclear and unanswered for me that I have concerns about are um, number one, testing. And I know that trustee Decker had um, asked briefly or mentioned this briefly in the last board meeting. Um, but I haven't seen and po- maybe this has been part of the conversation, but I haven't seen anything so far in um, in what I've seen that's been released that has talked about um, any type of comprehensive testing program that will be um, that will be related to MCPS specifically. Um, so countywide and statewide, there have been a lot of delays in getting test results back. And I know that that's getting worked out right now and it's, it's improving, but um, it's not, it's, it's totally possible that that could happen again. And um, I think it would be important to consider how, how would MCPS deal with that? Should that happen again? Um, and do, is there a, is, is there some type of comprehensive testing plan in place other than just, oh, you should get tested if you feel sick? Um, I also have concern about um, calling them phases. This is confusing for a lot of people in the public. I understand that these phases don't line up with the state and the national phase reopening, but using those same words makes it seem like they do. So maybe you could consider, maybe, maybe the, it could be taken into consideration calling them stages or levels or something so that it's not getting confused with the other phases that are happening. Um, so, and then I think some of this was covered in um, the questions that trustee Decker was asking. Um, and some of that conversation, but so you, Rob, Dr. Watson mentioned um, that, that we would want to see a steady decline in cases. Um, and that you don't really want to nail down a specific number. You just want to see a downward trend, but then you also had this, you, you clarified about having more than five cases per day or less than five cases per day. Um, and so I, I just think that it would be good to consider um, looking for a downward trend and a number. Rather than one or the other. Um, but uh, again, I understand that this is, this is a, both an art and a science. Um, and I also, I, I, I understand um, this, this wanting to go to this hybrid model and the thought that it would decrease transmission. I haven't seen the specific study that you're mentioning and I would really love to see it if, if there's somewhere that you could publish it on the MCPS website. I would love to um, to see the study and see the methods that they used for their modeling. Um, because my concern about this hybrid schedule is that kids are gonna be coming to school two days a week. And then maybe there's eight kids in a class, maybe 10 kids in a class. And then where do they go on the other three days? Are they all dispersing to different places and then all coming back together for the two days that they're together next, the following week? And does that actually increase the likelihood of transmission? We, I, that's unclear. Um, and then also in that model, I, I, in your video, Dr. Watson, as you were explaining um, sort of what the first few weeks of school would look like, I was really feeling in particular for the families of last names with A through L. Because their schedule for when their kids would go to school is different almost every week for the first four weeks. Um, and that's just, I, I don't know. I don't know what the right solution to that is. And then also things like after school care and busing. Um, that remains unclear in the literature that I've seen, um, in, in what I've, what I've seen put out about this. So um, thank you so much. I understand that there is a lot, there are a lot of moving pieces and there are a lot of things to decide. Um, and as a parent and as a member of the public, these are the things that I am still curious about. Thank you so much.
And thanks for that public comment and apologies for probably not calling on people in order, but there's a blue hand raised from a phone number 322. And then there's a hand raised from Felicity Derry and then there's a hand raised from Anna Beard. So if we can start with 322, then Felicity Derry, then Anna Beard.
I hope I'm coming through the correct person. My name is Hillary Welzenbach and um, I have children at Hawthorne School and at Porter and the comments that I have are, I am um, in looking at the, what we're understanding about transmission of the virus, um, the biggest barrier to safety is indoor air. And so I'm curious about how the district is number one, looking at the air systems that are in the schools, looking at the filtration and how many times per hour the air is in the classrooms and spaces that people will be occupying is filtered. Because if it's frequently enough, the rate of transmission will go down. And then I'm also curious about the possibility of, of greatly increased outdoor classrooms. This has been done in the past. This has been done in the past in other communities and in the United States when there have been pandemics. And it has great results for supporting children in connecting with the outdoor world, getting their school work done, connecting with other students without face masks on. And not getting sick. So those are two big. Things that I've been thinking about as well. I'm curious about. How we can support the connection between families that choose online learning and families that choose to stay in person. And I also wanted to say thank you to everyone for such hard work, such dedication to our community and. Yeah, pushing this forward in these times that are quite challenging. So thank you.
And I apologize, but I didn't catch your first and last name. So for our minutes, would it be okay if you.
Your first. So yeah, it's Hillary H I L L A R Y. Last name is W E L Z like secret E N B like boy A C H Weltenback.
Thank you so much, Connie detail, but we appreciate it. And I know just in the random participants list. Felicity Derry has a question and then Anna Beard has a question or a comment. So Felicity Derry first and that we can see how your name is spelled. And please go ahead and. We're trying to limit comments to three minutes, but we would appreciate hearing from you.
Hi there. I'd like to thank Dr. Watson for sharing the data that's driving the decisions. That was very helpful. I was wondering if the plan would cover all schools equally. Specifically, how the scheduling would work with Sealy's four day a week schedule.
Thank you. And I'm sure you could call Dr. Watson to chat about that individually and then Anna Beard has her blue hand up.
First, I wanted to say thank you, Dr. Watson, for keeping this really data driven. And also thank you trustee Decker for your comments and your diligence. I really appreciate the input that you have in these meetings. I had a couple of brief comments. One earlier, you had said that. That IEPs were still kind of being thought about and trying to figure out what that process would look like. And I think that as a family with kids of special needs, I just have to say that. For us, it's not a secondary thing that unfortunately for me to make a thorough decision on remote learning versus in person learning. I need to know what what that's going to look like in general, but also with our team specifically. And I understand that that's a lot to ask from our team on an individual level. But I I'm not sure how special needs families are going to go about making this decision unless there's other factors that weigh them in one direction or another. My other comment is I hope that there is leniency for kids in this. Remote learning may not be the or remote learning may be the safest and smartest choice for our family. But what if I can't get my child to sit in front of the computer every day or focus on lessons? When home has always been his safe space where he can relax, where he can fidget, crash, where he can be him. My home is not a school environment and this will be reflected for so many families this year. And then. Just a last thing thought. You had talked about that school schedule, the A through L and the M through Z. That there will be kids that get like they see their teacher, you know, Thursday, Friday, and then. The teacher gives them instruction on what they're meant to do during the remote learning time, but then there's going to be a weekend in between that time. Obviously, I have a lot of focus on kids with IEPs. I have a child that I know this will never work if he is in that like that weekend time. It's going to go out of his brain. But I think that that's a whole half of a population that's going to be at a disadvantage. I know that there's no easy answers with this. I know that we're aiming for the best that we can do. But again, I just feel the need to speak up for like in particular kids who have IEPs or who have. Needs and services that aren't getting met. And may not get to get supported during remote learning, not in the ways that they truly need. Thank you.
And I apologize because I'm sure I'm not calling people in order, but Halia Jazaria. If I mispronounce your name badly, please go ahead and unmute because I think.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks.
It's Halia Jazari. Thank you guys for this time to submit some public comments. I'm going to echo everybody who's spoken before me that this is a really difficult time and we appreciate all your efforts. And I appreciate this time to submit my concerns. I am a Russell Elementary parent of an incoming first grader. And. I the this has been mentioned before, but the phasing. The phasing, I mean, I know of a lot of parents, but I'm just going to speak on my own behalf. Phasing the school reentry system different than what the state and the county are doing. Seems to me to be very problematic on multiple fronts. It is confusing, but I think we can weed through the confusion with the great information that has been laid out in the charts we have. But more importantly, it's the fact that our county has opened up and parents are going back to work. And we have. The trustee Decker mentioned this and nobody is talking about. What parents who have two working parents are supposed to do. For the days their kids are not in school and how they're supposed to when when the whole county was shut down, it was a different story. And now phasing differently than the rest of our world is 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 concerning to me and it's problematic. And. I don't know what the solution to that is because parents are, you know, we are working family and my husband's been an essential worker. And I can't homeschool a few days a week and I recognize the concerns of safety. And parents who wish to keep their kids at home and they have that full online option, which I'm so grateful they have. And they can take full advantage of that. And I think the population that should be of a little bit of greater concern. Are those who want to go back to school and those who I forget her name. She just spoke before me, the IEP kids. Our school had a. Less than sixty percent participation rate in remote learning when computers were given to us, internet was free. And we had every resource and parents were on lockdown. What happens to those kids? And now it's going to be more kids when all the parents go back to school. And that's a long term effect that we're not. That I I hope we consider on a greater scale than we are now. Some of the things that Dr. Watson said that I wanted to comment on, I heard the term for the sake of consistency. A lot and I get it. I get how difficult that this is. I I don't wish to be in your shoes and I don't wish to be making these decisions. But consistency when it comes to masks and consistency when it becomes. An issue of do the first graders and the kindergartners and second graders have instruction versus the high schoolers. Is a concerning benchmark to me because it's very different. Telling five year olds to wear masks and have the teachers have to deal with that nightmare is very different than telling middle schoolers or older kids. So if it's not a requirement outside of our district, I would urge you guys to consider making exceptions that are not consistent. To help our teachers, to help our kids and make their lives easier for the whatever time they can have in school. Because unfortunately, the age range is so broad that consistency may not be something. May not be the benchmark that we can reach. Same with, you know, whether you go full online or partial online. We can all agree, I would hope that remote learning is less effective on five and six and seven year olds. Than it is on the kids who have been sitting in front of a computer in school all day anyway, and they can negotiate that. And so making those exceptions that are more work for you, less consistent. A bigger pain for everybody. Those are the things I would hope that the district considers. So that we can be more inclusive in our ultimate solutions. I am no scientist. I don't pretend to be and I read the studies. I don't pretend to understand them fully. But we talked a lot about data driven and I appreciate so much that everybody's looking at data, but I feel like the one piece of data. Well, I'll say two that has been missing. One is how many people want to send their kids back to school anyway? I I my hunch is it's a minority of people. And I know that survey is going out next week and I will tell you, I was so happy to hear that that is going out next week because I think the district can't make any decisions. Until they know what numbers they're dealing with. What if it's a small number that's manageable? And we can potentially not be in phase one to start because it's manageable and more people want to keep their kids at home. The second one is. We're not looking at the death rate. And you know, I have a friend and multiple friends, but a very good friend who tested for COVID. Three weeks ago, she still doesn't have a test results. She no longer has any symptoms. And so we, you know, with the test testing issues and the delay, you know, this person could have been passing it around. Or be asymptomatic. So if we're looking at data, I think we should also look at the mortality rate in our state. And while it's very tragic, I feel like. Thank God, we're faring better than some of the other states and we have to take the test result delays and all of those things into consideration when we're looking at data.
Interrupt. Unfortunately, we have a three minute limit and we've got a whole lot of people who want to make.
I will wrap it up.
I think you're over three minutes, but wrap it up.
On behalf of a parent who would really like to see the CDC recommendations be given some thought and the American Academy of Pediatrics who say going back to school. For those who want who want to, which is a minority.
A wrap up. No, just wrap up.
Please consider us too.
Thank you. And so Anna still has her hand up. Halia still has her hand up. Five two zero still has her hand up. And so I don't know if you want to make second comments, but Christine, you're also has her hand up and she hasn't made comments yet. So. Ms. Muir, if you want to make comments. Other than I think we can spell your name M E U R E R.
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. So go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, thanks, everybody. I'm a second grade teacher at Lewis and Clark Elementary. And I fully appreciate everything that's been said thus far. It's been very helpful and very informative. I guess one thing that I want to highlight that I have not heard discussed anywhere yet. Is that. In a normal day, our kids make decisions that they need help with, right? Like they push somebody. Or they break something or they hurt someone else's feelings. And those decisions, you as a teacher, talk them through, they apologize, they move on with their day. The decisions now, be it coughing, an uncovered cough or taking a mask off. Or touching something and then not following protocols, especially to put that requirement on a seven year old. And me as a teacher having to monitor up to 20 of them, which again, hopefully will not be the case. They know that the consequences of those decisions are far, far higher now. I'm of course not going to show up and say, hey, you know, it's a life or death situation here. If you cough on somebody, they could go home and kill a family member or whatever. But they know that and they're going to come to school with that weighing extremely heavily on their minds and hearts. And we need to be able, we need to be ready for that and ready to address that. And of course, I know, you know, some I have some ideas about how to talk about it in a developmentally appropriate way. But it's going to be there regardless and you're going to have kids arguing and saying. You know, it's way more than hurt feelings and they know that the consequences are far, far greater. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing all the things that will be different in their day, which will be every single thing. I need to say that I taught my friends are all teachers and we are losing our minds trying to figure out how to make this all work. We are a hundred percent willing to give it our very best effort all the time because that's what we do. But we're rethinking everything. I've ordered a microphone for me to use in my class. I've ordered contact lenses so my glasses don't fog up. I've ordered sit spots for my kids. I have no idea how I'm going to read them a picture book. And again, I'm willing to discuss all of those issues and then figure it out as best I can. So I guess I just want to say like, teachers are definitely in this and we are. Extremely concerned and attentive and doing everything we can already, even though it's summer to try and. Come to this as best we can for our kids. And we're going to need some support for them as well in terms of that mental health component and that stress and anxiety that's going to be elevated for them. Is going to be a big factor. But again, thank you, everybody for all your comments and thank you to the school board and Dr. Watson for all of your work. I'm so grateful to be teaching in Missoula. Wow, we have a really awesome community and school. Thank you.
Sorry, just unmuting myself and it's unfortunately in no particular order, just what I see. So A S Fortner. And then Ashley Hilliard and then Ezra Scher and then Anna Belcourt. So A S Fortner.
Yeah, hi. Thank you all so much for your time. Much has been said about data driven. Instruction or guidance around all this. And I would certainly say that must a lot of this has to be considered at the federal level as well. With the passage of the acts that may legitimize a greatened or heightened capacity for testing. You know, currently, the Lancet Journal of Medicine suggests that. Contact tracing loses its efficacy after three days. I can attest to it personally that having gone through the process myself through. The county health department, I didn't receive testing results for 15 days. I think to ask that of anyone else while being asked to be in quarantine, whether their children be asked to be in quarantine or remain in isolation. Is not a realistic expectation and I think until we can guarantee they will have some quicked rap quicker or rapid testing. I think it's hard to be reliant upon the data because by the time we even get to the contract tracing, it may very well be too late. So in order to be able to safely feel as though I can return to school as a teacher, I think we need to have some legitimate guarantees about the the ability of us to test. And be able to turn those things around quickly. Those R values go up very quickly. Especially if people aren't don't have the capacity to go to the testing resources that some people do have. Even at local cost care facilities and things like that, which most of us do as teachers, their turnaround time still is three to five days. And there's a lot of concern of that. And that's concerning that if you pay for it, if the county has to pay for all of those things. And many of our 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 families who aren't willing or don't have the capacity or healthcare to do that. We're going to have some really reluctant people to even do testing in the first place, much less remain isolated and quarantine. So I think until we can have those guarantees or those those dollars funneled specifically to that kind of testing, we can get rapid turnaround. I have a lot of concerns about using the data to drive our decisions about a very dynamic situation in which we're having to make situations every 16 days. Whereas those decisions we're making in 16 days may be relying upon data that is eight, 10 or 12 days old. So again, thank you so much for your time.
And thank you and I apologize, but can you tell us your first and last name?
Yes, I'd love to. Aaron Fortner, A A R O N F O R T N E R. Thank you again.
And then apologies again, just reading down Ashley Hilliard, Ezra Scher and Annie Belcourt are next. So Ashley.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Ashley Hilliard. I'm a mom to four kids. I have one who's a new incoming sixth grader at Meadow Hill, a new fourth grader at Chief Charlo. A new kindergartner at Chief Charlo as well as an infant who's on a waitlist and has been on a waitlist since I was 15 weeks pregnant. He's 10 months old now. I I also wanted to thank the trustees for their diligence and attention. For the administration and all the hard work that they have put into. An impossible decision as as it's been echoed. I've been anxiously awaiting instruction from the administration about returning to school so that I can also make data driven decisions for for my family. I've been waiting for updates regarding community supports as well. Just a little background. For my family and I only share this because I know that my family is not unique in this. My husband left his job this spring so that he could provide childcare to our four kids. And now he works an opposite schedule as I do while I work from home for the university. And I absolutely recognized my. And I absolutely recognize my privilege here, in that my family still has two incomes and will likely continue to have two incomes through this. However, the issue of choice to return to school actually feels quite involuntary right now. I have to choose between sending my kids to three different buildings and four different schedules, while maintaining a high-quality work for my employer, or not working or performing as well as an employee, so I can provide adequate supervision to my kids while working at home. I would like to offer a solution that I've not heard yet. I would very much encourage the school district to act as an anchor to communicate the community efforts to support families in these really tumultuous times. I know that there are creative solutions buzzing around in our community, and that if I had more time, I would be out there buzzing around to find them, but I just don't have it. It would be really great, and if it exists, then I just haven't, I haven't stumbled across it yet. But it would be great if the school district could act as an anchor for Missoula, for Missoula schools, to say, these are some of the solutions that the community is offering. And I'm talking more creative solutions, not necessarily a link to the health department or a link to the known resources that, you know, most of us as parents are fairly comfortable with or know about. You know, are there learning pods, neighborhood pods, to support home learning? Are there homeschooling groups that are interested in developing, you know, more creative ways to do the home learning environment? What about childcare for days when kids are at home, or for families who are going to prefer to keep their kids home? I believe that kids' academic and social supports need to be addressed outside the learning environment, especially at this time, and in really creative ways. Some of the other issues that I have faced in my life, that I know, like I said, I'm not alone, are families who can't afford childcare but who don't qualify for that support. What are, what are we going to do in those times that the kids are home? Families who don't have someone to supervise at home, because a parent, or both parents are working from home or elsewhere. They're a single parent, perhaps. What about those children who are going to do better in a classroom environment, but are really going to struggle if they face constant shuffles in schedules? My family also happens to be in that A-through-L category, and so, we're going to be doing a lot of shuffling. In addition to the fact that I've got kids who just happen to ride the age differences in a normal year at lots of different split schedules. Families who need support as single parents, families who are facing other difficulties at home, including mental health, behavioral health, addiction, substances, who aren't able to access the resources that they really need to succeed. How are we, how is the school going to continue to provide those supports? Or step in as a, as an anchor, again, to provide information for those families? You know, as a parent, I consider myself fairly active in this community, and I, this is one of the first times that I felt pretty isolated in finding solutions right now, and knowing where to go to find answers. So again, I expressed my gratitude for all the work. I also just have to say thank you to the administration and to the trustees who have kept your videos on for this time. I know that's not feasible for everyone, but I do appreciate for those who have the attention that you're giving to this. I have just the utmost respect, and just thank you. You've got this mom's heart, really. I thank you very much.
Sorry, unmuting. Thank you for public comment. And so, there's lots of hands up, and there's still hands up. So I'm trying to figure out if 3352 still wants that hands up. And let me know. And then the next hand up is Ezra Shere. So Ezra, if you don't mind spelling your name, and then making your comments, and we're trying to keep it to three minutes, that would be good.
Yes, my name's Ezra Shere, E-Z-R-A-S-H-E-A-R-E-R. I'll email some public comments and put a, put a letter link there in the chat for people to look at, because that would run a little bit long. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered before parents are asked to make a choice, and we have to answer those questions. One thing right off the bat is whether or not masks will be provided. The district has to provide masks to every single student, every single day, because otherwise, as a high school teacher, I'm now mask police. What if a student shows up with just a piece of cloth around the front of their face and claims it's an effective mask? Or what if a student who doesn't have the same resources as another student shows up with an ineffective mask? So now, our students who are impoverished are going to be stigmatized by wearing district-provided masks? Everybody needs to have the same mask, and everybody needs to have that mask provided, so everybody has the same level of safety. And so, teachers aren't faced with the choice of, that's not an effective mask, because now we have to make a judgment call on the effectiveness of the masks. There's a lot there. The long-term bottom line about this choice between full-time remote learning and in-person learning needs to be hashed out and made explicit. The document says that their learning will be facilitated by an MCPS teacher. That's not the same thing as an MCPS teacher teaching our students. And the only one online option I've seen explored or mentioned explored is a private equity firm-owned operation called Apex Learning, which is actually our direct competitors. And so, they actually go out, and they're owned by private equity capitalists based in New York City and Seattle, and they go out and try to poach kids away from public schools. So in this time of need, our students who are at higher increased health risks won't be able to have MCPS teachers teaching them. And instead, we're going to give them to a third party. We're going to, we're going to outsource their education in this time. That's unacceptable. Furthermore, those students want to have the same educational opportunities as students who attend in person. These outfits do not offer the same classes as we do, especially the specialized classes that we see at all three, all five of our high schools. And we don't know who these teachers are. We don't know how much experience they have. We don't know if they're Montana-certified. We don't know if they're delivering MCPS-directed curriculum. We need to find a solution that puts Missoula teachers in front of every single one of our students facilitating, I'm sorry, not facilitating, teaching them, because that's what our community counts on us for. They go in and out. And finally, I think that it would be really important for us to distinguish two conversations, one about K-5, and one about middle school and high school, because this is not one-size-fits-all. Middle school and high schoolers coming and being in person for in-person instruction or being full remote, those are two different scenarios. You're going to ask me to have half of my students in the classroom, which can't be more than 12, at six feet of social distance, two days a week, they're going to sit perfectly still in their desks, wearing a mask. They can't collaborate, they can't work with one another, can't do group work. They can't take the mask off for two and a half hours until lunch, then they take it off for half an hour. Where are they going to have lunch? And then they're going to go in the hall, or they're taking the mask off in the hall, and then they go sit in another desk, single file, straightforward, for another two and a half hours. You go five hours with a mask on, and then sitting perfectly still. This isn't the way education's done anymore, but that's what we're going to ask our high schoolers to do. So thinking about this K-12, same plan for everybody, what we need is maybe a different plan. And we also know that the transmission rates for high schoolers, it's one of the one pieces that we know are much, much higher. And I just want to touch briefly, just the model, the mathematical model that's being used to inform some of this scheduling piece, that model is based on inputs and then agent interactions, and you can see on page 42 of that, of that document. The, the, the doc, the inputs, one of them is that we don't have mixed-grade-level classes for that input. The second one is that their schools are almost half the size as our schools, meaning that the number of agents that feed into the statistical analysis is half as many agents as our urban high schools. Meaning, we have 500 kids, and their model was based on 180 kids who didn't have a passing period and didn't have mixed-grade-level classes. So we are not putting...
Ezra, can I interrupt? Kind of three-minute limit? And we have a whole lot of people who want to make comments. So if you don't mind, you can send the rest of the comments to either Rob or me, but we've got a lot more people we want to hear from.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but we have Casey Blue and more hands raised. So, so Casey?
All right. I feel like, you know, turning on your video is the new standing up at the mic. I got to practice that a little bit more. Been at the computer since 9:00 AM, so I apologize if I'm a little all over the place. But Casey Blue, middle school teacher, Missoula Education Association president. And Marsha, I thought you were going to get away with, like, cutting this one short, but all of us are here. I do want to say thank you all for sitting through all of the comments. There's a lot of feelings around this issue, and a lot of my educators in MEA have done a great job expressing some of those feelings. We have had about 400 MEA members out of our 700 take a survey that we sent out at the middle of last week. I'll wrap that up and get you some synopsis, some summary data. But the general sentiments of our entire teaching staff and both unions, actually, is that we want to get back to school. In-person education is what we do, it's what we're trained for. That's why we stick around. Some days it drives us crazy, and other days it's absolutely what we live and breathe. 80% of our teachers are concerned with COVID and their own health, but only 30%, according to our survey, are unable to return to school. So making sure that we have that online option for those teachers, as well as our students who are unable to return, is one of the reasons we've kind of pushed that online option. That's important for you guys to know. Safety, the health and welfare of students and staff, and the families, is absolutely the big union push. And I've been sitting in an AFT conference all day today. One of the highlights, of course, was this evening, we got to speak with Dr. Anthony Fauci. We watched President White Norton get to give him some educator and nurses' union kind of questions, and heard him answer. One of the shocking and kind of eye-opening statistics that he shared just this evening, he was on at 4:45 today, was that 20 to 40% of infections are asymptomatic right now, and they're more prevalent in young, healthy people. And of course, you know, we've seen the reports come out, and he mentioned it, that kids ages 10 to 19 are full of germs, just like adults are, same viral load. And, you know, we like to spread those germs around, because sharing is caring. We're going to have to teach some of those other lessons. So reimagining how that looks, you know, making sure that we have social classes that are still, you know, a safe space for kids emotionally and mentally, but that they're physically safe as well, is one of the big concerns that we have. So small, well-distance classes, even at half-class sizes, 16 in a room, in some of our upper elementary classrooms, is going to be tough, right? And then when we get to lunch and they take off their masks, you know, we don't have quite the distance that we need, and now we've complicated things further. You know, making sure that we have a structure that's safe, predictable, and consistent for kids and educators as we try to piece together what this looks like is essential. And, you know, when you see us trying to phase in or consider taking it slow to go fast, it's to, you know, help to ensure that we can actually stay in session for the longest period of time. And speaking of time, that's the other thing that you'll hear educators asking for. And it's not that we don't want to see kids, it's that we want to make sure that we actually have time to plan properly, to do our best work. So I guess I'll close by saying that, you know, our goal is to deliver the greatest possible quality education and services in the best way possible. And as we are positive, proactive problem solvers, and we're a community-based organization, we're going to need some help. So, yeah, I appreciate you guys being here. Thanks.
And in the meantime, hopefully, I'm not on mute. Annie Belcourt wanted to make comments, and I totally didn't notice that. So Annie, are you there?
Hi, good evening. Yes, I am.
Thanks. So, comment?
So thank you all. I really appreciate your time, and I appreciate the thoughtful work that has gone into all of this decision-making. And I just appreciate the university and the city, county health, also contributing to the data-driven discussions. Just a couple of quick points. One is that, you know, as we know from some of the data, Native Americans are at higher risk for both morbidity and mortality here in the state of Montana. So I don't know if it's possible, but having, you know, some, some thought towards how to protect vulnerable populations, including other people of color, as well as some of the folks that have been mentioned here, including children and families with disabilities, I think that's an important thing. The other is that for those children who may need to, or may not have a choice, but have to have the online learning component, that, you know, there be accommodations made so that assessment rubrics, you know, fully look at the circumstances that approach that decision. And so, thinking about that, and thinking about equity for people of color, and how that impacts their education, and so that, you know, the online learning component is not looked at as a second choice. As for many students, it may be their first and only option. So really thinking about that. And then, you know, some of the other things is just thinking about how we can all work together as a community to help, you know, improve the education for our children and families. And that includes mental health, and I'm glad people have spoken to that. One of the factors that face people of color, as well as Native Americans right now, as, as we know, is that, you know, this is a very difficult time, where we're confronting discrimination in a very, not unique way, but in a powerful way. And it impacts Native communities in particular, in that this is not the first pandemic that we've faced on our own homelands. And it's something that impacts our children in a unique way, in terms of the trauma that we know our children experience, due to that history, the historical trauma, and how we think about moving forward from that. So this is something, I think, I'd like to just be, you know, assured in some way that people are mindful of and moving forward in a way that acknowledges people who are here for many thousands of years, and who have helped to build this country. And, and our education is something that is very important to all of our families. But for our Native children, sometimes it's a way, you know, that is the only way that they can move forward in a good way, and from difficult circumstances, not for all, of course, but, but for many. So just wanted to applaud you for your efforts, but then also just really ask that there be a lot of thought put towards making all educational options equitable, and having health equity be, you know, of primary importance for, for all of our children and families. Thank you.
And thank you. And I see Jennifer Stevens has a hand up.
Thank you, Marsha. I'm a parent of a student in K-5, and also a middle school student. And thanks for all your work. I just, so much information tonight, and so much work that has gone into this really complicated situation here. But I, I would like to know and see more things online about what exactly the online academy is, so that, you know, we can make good decisions about whether or not we want our kids to participate in that. It was super interesting to hear the other commenter talking about that sort of outsourced Apex Learning platform, and, you know, if it does or does not, like, connect students back into the district. Another thing that we've been talking about is the sort of honor system temperature check policy that's in that draft plan, and wondering if that's sufficient, if the honor system is sufficient. I know that there are not currently nurses at every school to do checks in the morning, but, you know, will that be happening in some fashion, or could it? Because, you know, not everyone is going to actually comply with that honor system, so that's a concern. And then I think that's all the comment I have for tonight. Thanks again for your assistance, and I hope to hear more.
And thank you for all who provided public comment. I think I'm seeing blue hands.
Marsha, I think we have one with phone number ending in 3520 that has a blue hand up. I think we have one with phone number ending in 3520 that has a blue hand up.
I thought we captured her, but okay.
Hi, my name is Ty Williams. I have a son that's going into eighth grade at Porter. He is right, at this point is making the choice to do the virtual learning because he has asthma. He's experienced not being able to breathe, and so he has a fear of Corona. One thing this past spring that really helped him, and it was beneficial on the social level, he's also an only child, was the ability to participate in flagship, virtual flagship. And then Ms. Briner at Porter did virtual PE. So I would like to encourage the district to continue to offer those services to the students who do participate in the online academy, because one of the reasons that, you know, we're advocating for kids to go back to school is that social component. The other thing is, is I'm a special ed teacher at Hawthorne. I teach an extended resource class, and I know that the district has received funding in order to provide protective equipment to classrooms and to employees. And I want to know, once you know, I really appreciate that. I was wondering if any of those funds would be made available to teachers, because teachers really know what they need in their classroom for safety. For instance, my students have an earned free time. I teach kindergarten through second grade extended resource, so they work for an earned free time. And if I were able to have some like quicks and glass guards that I could put on the floor, they would still be able to play beside one another, even though they wouldn't be able to play with one another. And so I would encourage the district maybe to reach out to teachers if they have any of that funding available for teachers to make some choices of what type of protective equipment they need in the classroom. So again, if you would just consider the social needs of students who are in that virtual learning mode and looking at maybe some online flagship and then like online PE, and then looking at providing special ed teachers or other teachers the ability to make some choices of safety equipment that they need in their classroom. And then lastly, just telling you all, thank you so much for all you're doing. I know this is tough, and I know you're putting a lot of effort and energy into it, and I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks for your public comment. As always, you can contact me or Dr. Watson, and we will, I think we're on the last item on the agenda, which is public comment on non-agenda items. We would again be happy to hear from anyone who wasn't able to participate at the beginning of the meeting, and I will look. And not seeing anyone raising their hand, so we are adjourned. Thank you all for your dedication.
Thanks, trustees. Thanks for all the public comments.
Thanks, Brian, for helping out tonight.
Rob, thank you.
Thanks, Tricia, most of all.